Called to order, the regular meeting of the City Commission for the City of Dickinson, North Dakota. The record show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the Order of Business. Mr. Gah, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
No, sir. There are no changes.
Thank you. Any questions on the Order of Business, Commissioner? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion.
I'll try to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion on the Order of Business? Not all in favor of the Order of Business as stands, state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Any item on the consent agenda that commissioners would like to discuss? Hearing no items on the consent agenda that commissioners wish to discuss, I'd look for a motion on the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
And the second. Any further discussion, questions on the consent agenda? I will vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We do have two items on the timetable, so we'll go right into the administration and finance on non-timetable. And the first item up is the sales tax revenue bond, and that'll be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, Mayor Decker and Commissioners. This resolution coincides with the sales tax bond ordinance that was presented last commission meeting as first reading. The Sales Tax Revenue Bond Resolution Series 2019 goes into detail how the city will use the money to pay for the bonds issued by the Clean Water and Safety Water Act revolving loan funds created by the North Dakota Century Codes to finance the cost of public water and wastewater system utilities. This resolution sets up the 30-year payment schedule on the $2,370,000 project cost and details principal and interest payments, funding of the payment resources, and then reserve of debt percentages. Attorney review has been completed, and staff recommends approval of the Series 2019 Sales Tax Revenue Bond.
Okay, any questions for Mrs. Carlson? Hearing no questions on the Sales Tax Revenue Bond, I would look for a motion on this resolution. And this should be 27-2019. So this is Resolution 27-2019. And I said I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up is amending the City of Dickinson Employee Plan. Mrs. Carlson, you'll be handling that.
Yes, thank you. Included in your packet is a resolution to approve the 2020 Wage and Salary Compensation Scale as presented as Exhibit A. On August 28th, as a budget work session special meeting, the commission approved a resolution number 25-2019 to go forward with the new wage compensation study and then repeal the previous wage scale. And during that meeting, a proposed draft wage scale was presented to you. At this time, a new amended resolution is before you to approve the attached wage salary compensation scale, which is broke down into three categories of positions, that is the technical, the professional, and the management or exempt positions. The new wage scale incorporates the skill-based pay along with longevity credit in years worked for the city and a health benefit credit. This new wage scale for the City of Dickinson achieves the sought-after goal of retaining our employees and providing them with benefits for retention. Also, attorney review has been completed, and staff recommends approval of the new employee pay plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson or staff on 25-2019?
This would be a new resolution presented to you.
Okay. So there will be a 28-2019. Any questions for staff or Mrs. Carlson? Mrs. Carlson, and Mr. Gah, I understand there has been some, an educational process that you've been going out to the departments?
Yes, once the commission approved this in the budget session, we've kind of been doing the final tweaking of the system and really looking at what are the situations we need to be prepared for. We did all staff trainings last week. They went very well. They asked some good questions, which kind of helped us as far as the benefits side. That was, most of the questions were geared towards the new insurance contributions, more so than the wage scale. But that's went very well. Once this is approved, finalized in the budget, the first meeting in October, then we're going to go departmentally, and each employee will get a letter. They'll have a little bit more opportunity for one-on-one discussions with the finance and administrative staffs. So we'll fully have this implemented, and they'll have things in their hands within a couple of weeks after final approval.
Okay. Any other questions or comments for staff? Now I'd look for a motion on 28-2019.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions, or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have a settlement agreement, Mr. Gah.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. This is, dates back to a construction contract that was completed, I believe, four years ago, but there were some remaining claims and disputes went on between the parties for quite a bit of time. The contract called for mediation and then potentially arbitration. The mediation process has been going on for pretty close to six months. And really, I thought we were about to the point where we were going to have to go to arbitration, but the mediator made one final proposal, which was preliminarily accepted by both the city and Vite. So what we're asking tonight is final approval on that and the settlement, and that does release the city and any of its contracts, engineers, anything for any further claims.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gah. Any questions for Mr. Gah on the settlement? Hearing no questions, I'd look for a motion on the Vite settlement agreement.
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing no discussion or questions, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustum?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on the agreement. Mr. Gah, you have some reports for us?
Yes, thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Again, just a few things. One, over the last few weeks and months, Bob Furman at the museum has been working with some volunteers and board members interested in putting an electric vehicle charging station at the museum. This is something that the CVB's also located there. They get several questions on. Quite an up-and-coming trend. Apparently, there's lots of websites that give locations, and this will be the first public station, I believe, that can host all electric vehicles, and I've been told I'm not really versed in electric vehicles, but it is something that's important. And when you put it in an area where are tourism resources and restaurants, people will park there, charge for about 45 minutes, grab a meal, go to the museum, stop in at the CVB. It's just a perfect opportunity for it. They've met with the maintenance staff and make sure its location will be appropriate and not interfere with any maintenance activities. It doesn't, isn't going to take any city funds to build, so we think that's a really good opportunity to provide a service and enhance people to stop. What you look for when you're driving a gas-powered vehicle is a sign for a gas station. What you do when you're in electric vehicles, you check ahead of time for those sites, and I think this will be a good thing. Also, moving on, couple of thank you notes, but I want to add something in too. The Dakota Transit Association, which is transits from throughout North and South Dakota, has been holding their fall conference here for the last few days. It ended today, and they asked me to come out and give a little welcome, and Colleen Rodakowski, their director here, said that a couple of local folks were recognized at their banquet. And so she sent me an email, I'm just going to read this. Public transit in Dickinson received two state awards at the Dakota Transit Association Fall Conference. First, Larry Robinson, a CPA in Dickinson, received the North Dakota Friend of Transit Award for his 29 years of service on the Elder Care Management Board. Larry's volunteer efforts in supporting the transit services and public transit employees are tremendous asset to our community. Kelsey Connell is the Finance and Human Resources Coordinator at Dickinson Public Transit and received the North Dakota Outstanding Support Staff of the Year Award. She was recognized for her growth at the agency as well as her communication skills and assets that she brings to the public transit team. So congratulations to both Larry and Kelsey and public transit for those awards. So that's very nice. And then a couple of thank you notes. The first one from Badlands Ministries, which received a Southwest grant on behalf of Badland Ministries and all we serve. We wish to thank you for your kind donation. We could not accomplish our mission without our faithful donors, and your financial support allows our ministry to happen. Thank you for being a blessing. And they further discuss how they used the money and a little bit about their facilities, and that is included in your packet. And then also, the Dickinson Downtown Association. On behalf of the Dickinson Downtown Association, thank you for your support. As you know, downtown is the most viable, most visible indicator of community pride along with its economic and social health. It can either be an asset or a liability in the effort to recruit new residents, new businesses, and industries. The DDA works hard to ensure our downtown is an indicator of community pride and an asset, and we couldn't do it without your continued support. Thank you, and we look forward to working together in the future. That's all I have.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Gah. Those are good thank you notes. Next item up is our Hiring Journal. Mrs. Dominick?
Good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. So first on our list is police officers. They did interviews today, and offers will be made. They did have a good round of interviews, it sounds like. Communication specialists, we have, so police officers, we have two openings currently. Communication specialists, we had one opening, and an offer was made. And we recently had a hire. She started yesterday. Design engineer, we are just kind of on hold on that. We've not had much luck with getting applicants for that, so it's kind of on hold. Engineering technician, we recently had a resignation, and were able to fill that position with one of our seasonal staff members, so now he is in the role as a full-time employee. The operations manager position, we're going to open that up end of this week, beginning of next week. We're working on the profile for the position right now, so hopefully we'll get that opened and advertised real soon. Collections route operator, we've had several positions and just made two offers. We're in the background phase for those two, so hopefully that will work out. We'll have that fall. The skill service representative, we just made an offer today, and we are in the background phase for that. The bookmobile librarian is kind of on hold at this point. And the water utility operator, we have one opening for that, and that was filled, and that employee has started. So at this time, that's all we have.
All right, thank you, Mrs. Dominick. Any questions for Mrs. Dominick on the Hiring Journal? Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll move into public safety, and I have a proclamation, and I think Chief Seabock or Fire Marshal Sally's here. Good evening.
Good evening, Commissioners. This is just a quick little, I guess, the fire prevention proclamation for this year. Before you read this, I'd like to go through a little bit of what the fire prevention, I guess, what the week is really about, and I'm also going to take the opportunity to show you this first slide here of two sprinkler saves that were, put two fires out in our community. Through the code process, the fire code, and fire prevention throughout the years has basically pushed sprinkler systems, and it saved, as you can see, you know, $4.5 million or better. That's just in the building property loan. That has nothing to do with the contents or people's stuff that they had inside these buildings. One was an assisted living facility, and the other one was a 42-plex apartment. So a lot of dollars that were saved because of fire codes and fire prevention and things that it has done. Fire prevention itself, the history of it, of course, is 1871. The Great Chicago Fire happened on October 9th. This was the breakout of the big fire in Chicago. The main fire really started on the 8th, but on the 9th is when the big fire took place. And I won't get much into the history of that, but basically, because of that fire is really what pushed the fire prevention and the codes. And the first fire prevention week was in 1925, was the first time they've actually did it as a week, and that was by a presidential proclamation. This makes it the longest-running public health and safety initiative. So that's kind of how far back the fire codes and fire prevention has gone, and with that, I just bring the proclamation for you to hopefully adopt as a city.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Fire Marshal Sally before I read this proclamation? Hearing none, I'll go ahead and read the proclamation. The City of Dickinson, North Dakota proclamation. Whereas the City of Dickinson, North Dakota is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting Dickinson, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at the greatest risk from fire, and whereas the majority of U.S. fire deaths, four out of five occur at home each year, and whereas when the smoke alarm sounds, Dickinson residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety, and whereas Dickinson residents who have planned and practiced the home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas Dickinson residents should practice the home fire escape drill at least twice a year during the day and at night, and whereas Dickinson residents should make sure everyone in the home knows how to dial 911 from a cell phone or a neighbor's phone, and whereas Dickinson residents should get out and stay out, never going back inside the home for people, pets, or things. And whereas the 2019 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Not Every Hero Wears a Cape, Plan and Practice Your Escape," effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Therefore, I, Scott Decker, Mayor of Dickinson, do hereby proclaim October 6th through the 12th, 2019, as Fire Prevention Week throughout this city, and I urge all people of Dickinson to be aware of their surroundings. Look for available ways out in the event of a fire and/or emergency. Respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and support the main public safety activities and efforts of the Dickinson Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2019. And I'm looking for a motion to approve this proclamation.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. All in favor approving this proclamation, state aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Pass that down to Mr. Gah.
Mr. President?
Yes, Commissioner Trustum.
Quick question for Fire Marshal Sally. You know, it talks a lot in here about developing a home safety plan. Is there anything we do within the city to help residents develop that plan? Is there sources that they can utilize to create one for their homes?
Yeah, there's, through our website, our Facebook page, we have links to the NFPA website, which gives you all the homeowners what they would need to do their home plan, help you with the layout, and choose a meeting point, and all the contacts and information, all that stuff is laid out on our website. And also, we have pamphlets and brochures, and we most definitely will go out and talk with individuals as well.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll move on to public works. Mrs. Zurov, you have a Ferguson proposal for replacement of our meters.
Yes.
Or the meter interface units, excuse me.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioner. Many of our meter interface units, which provide the staff the ability to read the meters by driving by, have reached their lifespan and need to be replaced. This proposal is for Ferguson Enterprises to provide the labor to install 305' to 1-inch meters, or it's not meters, excuse me, the registers, for those meters. This is the first phase in this project, and this will assist the Utilities Division by taking care of the current problems we're having by acquiring, which we're having, acquiring the data remotely. So we're having to spend additional time and resources and can't keep up by doing it manually. Installations for these interface units will be preferably outside, which will give us the ability to move to a fixed base system in the future. City Attorney Crick has reviewed it, and staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Zurov. Question, the notification going out to the people getting the replacement, what was going to be the process?
Well, that's one thing we hired Ferguson was, is because they do it, I think, by email, by letters, by knocking on the door. I haven't brought it, but they do all that work, which usually takes a lot of time for us to do. They're in charge of notifying the property owner. I think they do it in a number of different ways.
And if the process isn't followed, what is, I guess, if we start receiving complaints that possibly...
Oh, from Ferguson?
Well, no, I'm talking to the general public. They're not being notified. Somebody's all of a sudden in their backyard replacing their water, you know, metering unit.
With these meters, they'll have to get with the property owner, because what they're replacing are, our current meters have a little unit on top. They're going to replace that unit and then try to get it outside to move to a fixed base, so they'll have to get in the house, talk to the property owner, get in the house, schedule an appointment.
So it's not...
Part of that is scheduling an appointment.
Okay. Any other questions for Mrs. Zurov?
Have to try to get the wire outside?
Yes, or at least closer to the outside wall. There was discussion about, you know, some of these newer houses wanting, having to drill, but most of it's just trying to get it by the outside wall. You know, before they had those outside meters or digital, either touchpads, or even before that, they had to, you read it outside and have the digital outside. Maybe we use, on existing houses, maybe we use some of those holes, you know, is what we're talking about, with the boxes outside. We'd like to get it close to the outside wall. Possibly drill right under the, get it outside so we can pick it up with a fixed base.
So is this a completely different transmitter?
It's a little different.
I'm just concerned that the homeowner is notified that they're possibly, if it doesn't read from inside, that there's possibly some, you know, drilling going on.
I think we'll make sure that they understand that. You know, it'll be minor, be less of a hole than a cable, TV cable or any of that.
I can just say, my personal house, it's 30 feet to the outside wall from where the water meters at. I mean, or at least 20, because it's behind my garage, my utility rooms. I'm trying to figure out how they're going to get it to an outside wall.
That'll be part of the challenge. You know, because I don't, you know, you run cable inside your house?
Yeah, but that's prior to, prior to it being finished.
Some of us only have homes that are 30 feet wide, more or less 30 feet from the center.
I mean, it's, I mean, anything is possible. I'm just saying it's, you don't have your utility room on the outside wall, it's going to be very challenging, fishing over somebody's ceiling. Why didn't we just replace the ones we had?
We'd like to go closer to the outside wall or even outside. You can't do a fixed base system in some of the basements. A fixed base system won't be able to pick up your meter. So in a fixed base system, you have antennas throughout town, kind of like our SCADA system. The drive-by, you know, you get right in front of your house, we can pick it up by the meter interface unit in your basement, but a fixed base system, you want it as close to the outside. Those antenna systems are very expensive, so the fewer amount of, the antennas we have, when we go towards a fixed base system, the better. So the more, more we can get to the outside wall to be able to pick up, the less antennas to have to put throughout town to pick up that, or three.
I already, what I'm concerned with is, I can see that, it says if it can't, if you cannot put it on the exterior, which I think is going to be an issue too, if somebody doesn't get to pick where they put it.
Well, I can still get to pick. I mean, we're going to work with the problem.
But it says it will be installed on an interior wall, which I think could be an issue too with some people. And all of a sudden, you're going to have this transmitter just stuck on your wall somewhere. This initially is 300? Correct.
Do we want to take some time to consider this further?
They aren't working the ones that currently have. We need to get them replaced.
Our other option would be, you know, not to look to the future and not consider fixed base units and just put the meter interface units where they are on the meters. That's what we could do right now. But everything's going to a fixed base, smart city, everything connected, so that's why we're looking at going different. We can put them on the existing meters, maybe that's not...
Mr. President, if there's no more discussion, I'd move to approve.
Any other questions? We have a motion to approve.
Second.
Second to approve. Any further discussion or questions? I guess I just, I see a lot that can go wrong here, personally.
Well, we went back and installed the original 20 years ago. It cost over a million dollars for that. I don't know if we had any complaints back then when we went in and had to go in and explain to the homeowner what was going on and made it easier to just do a drive-by to get the information. We didn't have to go in your house, didn't have to go in the basement, you didn't have to be home. We just drove by and got the information. This is better than that.
But this is, this is going to fish this through somebody's house to the outside.
Well, I understand, yeah, they're used to cable fishing, they're used to telephone fishing, they're used, I don't think this is the first time these people have gone into it.
No. And if there's situations like Mr. Frederick's, we can just leave it on the meter and just look if we go to fixed base, we can just increase our antenna. Antennas throughout town, and that's what we'd have to do. So it'd be, the meter would, or the interface unit would be exactly where it is now, in your house. We would leave it exactly on your...
I guess my... Who makes that determination? The contractor?
No, if the home, if, if we have problems or if they don't want it in a certain area, we're, we are not going to force somebody to do it. If they don't want that, we can just leave it on the meter. I will talk to the contractor about it. Although we do have the right to enter your home and remove the meter, fix the meter, take, you know, whatever we need to do to be able to read your water through that meter.
Mrs. Kreip. I'm reading this and it says the seller will not be liable for property damage.
Correct.
So that's basically the people installing this.
Correct.
So who will be liable if somebody has a complaint?
Well, there's the municipal immunities that the city has in the course of offering its standard, essentially in the course of operating as a city and within its scope. So the city couldn't necessarily sue the vendor, but it's possible that an individual resident could go after the vendor, but then the vendor will come to the city and expect reimbursement under that clause.
Any other questions?
My only recommendation would be to get this out to the contractors ASAP so we can start pulling wires. So, because you don't put the water meter until we're done with the house. So we can pull it. We do it for Consolidated, we do it for everybody else. Tell us what kind of wire we need to pull to the outside and where it's got to be at so it's done.
We can shoot that for, for future houses. Right now, you know, we're just trying to fix some ones that we're having issues with.
I know, but we're going to go to this on, we're not going to put these old meters in new houses. We're going to put these new meters in the new houses. At some, are we not?
If the direction we go, it's not the meters, it's the little box. If we're looking for a fixed base network, yes, we'd like to get these wires out and the boxes to the outside.
That's what I'm saying, so if we're building new houses, we should be getting the wires out.
Yep.
So we don't have to...
And we'll get that to the contractor.
Okay, any further questions or comments? We have a motion to approve this agreement and a second. Or the proposal, I should say, approve the proposal.
Mr. President, I just wanted to point out on paragraph five, there's a counter provision. I don't know if you saw that in demarcation where the seller will indemnify the buyer, meaning the vendor will indemnify the city if there, if there is any damage caused by their negligence. So if they're doing something improper, they would be responsible for that. If it's something that is foreseeable in the ordinary course of, of them doing their job, that wouldn't be negligence, so that's when you enter that standard of care analysis.
And that's why we require the insurance from them, because we're actually the primary contractor here. There are subcontractors. Something happens, the people are going to come to us, we are going to pay it. We're going to ask the subcontractor to pay us.
There are no more comments or questions, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. We have a 5 o'clock timetable, public hearing for SRF loan ordinance, wastewater utility system, and that'll be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. This is the public hearing and second reading, final passage of that sales tax bond ordinance number 1682. This ordinance states that the city by ordinance 1233 may levy, levy sales and use tax to the dedication of infrastructure such as improvements to the lift station number one project. In applying for a state revolving fund loan, this bond ordinance establishes source of payment and dollar amount of loan. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on this ordinance 1682? Hearing no questions. This is a public hearing, I'll open this up to the public. If anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns with ordinance number 1682, the SRF loan ordinance for the wastewater utility system, please come forward, state your name, tell us your concern. Anyone from the public? Anyone with any concerns on ordinance 1682?
My only concern would be, I know you, I'm not personally worried about it, but with the transmission of the security and ability to be hacked, be my only concern. With everything going smart, if it's digital, it's going over doorways, airwaves, it can be hacked. I don't know how big of a concern it would be up here, but just food for thought, thank you.
Anyone else with any concerns with ordinance 1682? Seeing no one else has any concerns, close the public hearing. Commissioners, any further questions on ordinance 1682? Now I look for a motion on 1682.
Move to approve, Mr. President.
We have a motion to approve.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
She votes aye. Next item up is a 2020 tax levy ordinance. Carlson?
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. This ordinance is presented as the first reading and public hearing of the upcoming 2020 annual appropriation and tax levy. Included in the appropriation is all general fund departments, contingencies, transfers out, retirements, and OPEB health insurance. The total general fund expense balance for 2020 will be in the amount of $20,353,427. This is an increase of $1,161,766 or 5.71% over the 2019 budget. Our tax levy for the city is $5,724,000, which includes the library and airport at four mills each with an estimated tax of $476,000. With the taxable valuation decrease in 2020, the city mills increased from 45.97 from 2019 to 48.12 for 2020. But the total dollar amount stayed the same, so we kept the same amount. Staff is recommending approval of the first reading of the annual appropriation and tax levy for 2020, and this will also include the new wage study.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson? This will be ordinance 1685?
Move to approve, first reading.
Well, we got a public hearing first.
I'm sorry, you're right.
I'll keep that, I'll keep that in mind, so...
I was waiting for you.
Yeah, I know. Jumping the gun. All right. Any other questions for Mrs. Carlson or comments? If not, this is a public hearing. I'd invite anybody from the public, if they have any concerns over the 2020 tax levy ordinance 1685, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concerns with the tax levy ordinance. Anyone from the public? Anyone have a concern on ordinance 1685, the 2020 tax levy ordinance? Seeing no one has any concerns on ordinance 1685, I'll close the public hearing. Mr. Steiner, you still wish to...
Yes, still move to approve.
Motion to approve? We have a motion to approve?
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions for staff on ordinance 1685? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on 1685. We'll go back to Public Works and, no, I guess, yeah, we're going to Planning. I was going to give Mr. Zurov some extra time. Had all afternoon, had all, no, all afternoon with us, so... All right, we have Planning, we have rezoning, West Ridge, second and, and third. Mr. Hadley?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is the second reading of ordinance 1683. It's a rezoning of what is now considered West Ridge second. The reason it's listed as third, I think I described last time during the public hearing. There's a resolution and a final plat coming to you on October 1st that's going to be West Ridge third, and so that's why it's, it's been noticed that way because on this particular plan, it's a mix of West Ridge second and third on the zoning classifications. At a hearing at the last city commission meeting, there was no opposition. Staff would recommend approval of ordinance 1683.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on ordinance 1683, which is the rezoning of West Ridge second and third? Mr. Hadley, the, the access point I see has, that was originally modified. I mean, modified from the original, right?
On the, on the final plat, yes, that's, that's coming October 1st.
Okay.
To you, it is, it has been modified significantly, but the zoning boundaries are the same.
Yes. Any other questions or comments? We've had the initial public hearing, so there will be no public hearing. Commissioners, if there are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve with a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Hadley, you have a Chapter 34 amendment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This would be the second reading also of ordinance number 1684. It is an amendment to Chapter 34, the subdivision ordinance for the city. This has been worked on for many, many months. At the last, at the public hearing, there was a discussion on clarifying the three-way agreement and also how, how the fees will be charged. Those two items have been addressed in the, in the updated draft, and the fee schedule obviously will come to the city commission for approval on the, the permits that were discussed in the ordinance. So that fee hasn't been set yet, but it will be set as part of the fee schedule for the coming year. There hasn't been any further comments from public, and we had a public hearing at the last meeting, and there was no one in opposition to it. Staff would recommend approval of ordinance 1684.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. Any questions for Mr. Hadley on Chapter 34 amendment? Ordinance number 1684. Any comments or questions? Hearing none, I look for a motion on ordinance 1684.
So move.
We have a motion to approve 1684.
Second.
With a second. Any further discussion or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Trustam?
Aye.
Mr. Steiner?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries on 1684. We have nothing this evening from billing code and enforcement. We do move on to the public issues of city concern, not on the agenda. If anyone has any concerns, not on our agenda, that is happening within the city of Dickinson, please come forward, state your name, and let us know your concerns.
Good afternoon, my name is Chris Geetson, city of the, Dickinson, city resident. I was at the county hearing this morning in regards to the proposed tax increase. Excuse me. Since then, I've had some more time to think and got some more could, would, or shoulds. So you guys all get the extended version this evening, and my wife just went through, took out all the profanities, so it's going to be a lot shorter, but thank you for your time this evening. I'm really angry and a lot disappointed. When I voted for most of you, I did so with a faith, hope, and trust that you would have my best interests at heart. But now, obviously, that isn't the case. Because if you did have my best interests at heart, you wouldn't be trying to reduce my income with this proposal. I'm disappointed and inferiority at this point. This is a third proposal in four months for a property tax increase. Seems to me you can't take my money frequently or fast enough. There are two adages I would like you all to keep in mind when you're conducting the people's business. Number one, saving money is making money. Secondly, it's always easy to spend other people's money. Find it further offensive when I consider the following facts. First, North Dakota has the 10th highest property tax in the country. The only other oil-producing state higher than us was Texas. Second, in 2017 to 2018, population of Dickinson increased 2.4%. More people means more tax revenue. We also have the blessing of not oil, oil tax revenue from production, but the oil field support side, supplies, equipment, and services. Production is up, up across the Bakken. More production equals more revenue. We'll be receiving substantial revenue as a hub city from the Prairie Dog bill. I would like to know what your plans are for this. My property value did not increase last year, yet you want to increase the percentage you take? So if my property values go up next year, I'll be paying more in addition to this proposal? If it doesn't go through and values increase, you still get more revenue because my property value increased. I was taught to offer solutions as coming with the problem. One suggestion I have would be a tax cut. If people are taking home more money, they'll have more disposable income. It's human nature, the more one makes, the more one spends. The more spending that occurs, the more tax revenue that is generated. This is currently working on the federal level. I don't know why you don't think it'll work on the local level. Lower taxes increases revenue, Reagan proved it, and now Trump is proving it. The solution, solution works very well, only if government spending is not increased. Secondly, was requested for the city park. I suggest that there's a budget shortfall for the parks, reduce the spending. If you can't reduce the spending, then generate revenue. And all y'all are saying, how do we do that? I recommend taking the least-used parks and sell them into the private sector so they could be developed for commercial or residential use. Not only would the sale of land incur property tax revenue year after year, it would cut the city maintenance expenses for the park. Saving money is making money. How many parks to be sold needs to be determined by the budget shortfall and future realistic tax prediction, revenue projections. Now, how do you determine which are least-used parks? And before you rush off to spend our money to fund an outside firm to conduct a study, I recommend an in-house study. A good indicator of usage would be trash. If people are utilizing the park, they'll be bringing pop, water bottles, food, diapers, et cetera, and disposing on-site. The sanitation department can monitor trash volumes collected at each park to gauge usage. If trash is not being put in receptacles and just littered so city workers have to clean it up, I don't want my money supporting public space not being appreciated and causing maintenance costs increases. The fact that this proposal is even occurring is indicative of the following. Either there's a budget shortfall, which means you overspent our money, you're either low in budgeting skills or are just greedy. I expect my representatives to exhaust, to exhaust all possibilities, including, but not limited to, cutting spending or increasing revenue from existing bases before coming to the hard-working taxpayer with a handout for more money because you are fiscally irresponsible. If this proposal passes, I guarantee you, I will not vote for a single one of you in the next election. And I do want to know what our plans are for the Prairie Dog funds. Thank you for your time.
We are limited on what we can spend Prairie Dog on.
Excuse me?
We are limited...
I know, I understand it's infrastructure only, I get that. I just would like to know what our plans are, because everything I've been looking, I can't find...
It's going, it's going towards fixing roads.
Roads?
Yes.
Thank you.
Can I explain? You had a good section there on parks. You do know that there are, there are own taxing entity, we have nothing to do with the parks?
There's, and my statement, it said city parks is requesting a tax.
There are no city parks.
What's the park?
There's Dickinson Parks and Recreation.
Okay.
We have not one dime to do with...
So why my tax seller?
We can't sell a city park. Dickinson Parks and Recreation manages and owns all these parks. They levy the taxes that they need to operate all those parks. So your concern there has nothing to do with us.
They're a separate taxing entity. If you look at your, your tax breakdown...
Right.
You'll see the county...
Yeah, I, yeah, okay, I see that. So it's strictly not to you guys, I have to go to the...
We have no control over it.
Okay, no, I just, I read the riot act to the county this morning to have figured this...
Mr. President, we appreciate you coming in. We hear your concern. We, you know, we own homes too, we pay taxes too. I think you need to go to the county and have the same talk with them.
I did this morning.
Good. Did you go to the airport and have this talk with them? Did you go to the airport and have this talk with them?
No.
Did you go to the public school and have this talk with them? You went to public school?
No, 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 no.
Okay, you need to.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I think if you look at the five taxing entities, you're going to find that the city of Dickinson has been the lowest year over year over year the last 18 years.
What's been the lowest?
And I think if you take your property and look at the property taxes in the city of Dickinson only, you're going to be somewhat surprised how little, if any, they went up year after year after year. This is what we run into constantly. People get their tax statement, it went up. Even though the city and your value of your home, the city-side tax may have went down. Overall, the, the city. We get blamed, the city, for the county, the public school, the parks and rec, and so on. So, you know, we hear your concern. You know, this is the first year we've taken a mill levy increase in a lot of years, with not much more increase in the, uh, the funds that it actually brings.
What, excuse me, for asking, when was the last time we did a tax cut, though?
I think you can go back and, uh, look at the mill levies, uh, for the past period, period.
The last one I know was, I think it was 2014, when they did it with the state legislature.
You may pay a little bit more from your property taxes because of the value of your home has gone up. That's a good thing.
I understand that.
Okay.
But it's still more money on my pocket, and then you're doing another.
That's when you sell your home, all this will come back into play.
But another half a percent right now, in the meantime, doesn't help.
But to address your concerns, you know, you made some very unfair remarks there to us. And, you know, I've been on here a while, and I, and I'm getting old, and I'm starting to take offense to some of these things.
I apologize for offending you, but, uh.
That's fine.
I'm offended that every time I turn around, I'm getting another proposal for a tax increase.
Okay. But to come in and say, I'm not voting for any five of you because of this here. I don't think that's understandable on your part, where you don't understand the entire part of this whole process. And that's indicative of what you said about the parks and recreation.
That I understand, but I do understand that more tax revenue for more people living here is more tax revenue. You don't have to increase it with your base population.
But our expenses also go up. We've doubled the amount of.
Inflation's at 1.8% today.
In the last 10 years.
I understand that.
We didn't double the, uh, population.
No, I understand that, but lower your taxes.
We have a $30 million wastewater facility out there that is now making us money. So, this will make the circle. I understand, yes, your taxes are going up, mine are going up. But look at the whole picture.
I'm trying, I'm trying, I'm trying. No, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for your concerns.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the public have any concerns? Anyone from the public? Seeing no one else has any concerns, not on our agenda, we'll move on to the commission. Commissioners, do you have anything? Uh, I just have one, one item that, um, I'd like to bring up. We have a schedule for October 1st is our next meeting. Regular scheduled meeting, and I've, uh, spoke with Mrs. Carlson about approving our, our budget. If any of you would have a conflict, if we could move that meeting to the second, which would be a Wednesday, because, um, myself and another commissioner have been invited to, um, a meeting with the governor, and it's in Fargo, and we wouldn't be able to make it back in time for that meeting that night. So, I wanted to see if we have any issue moving it back a day, and as long as it doesn't interfere with us approving the budget and getting it off in time, so.
That date won't have any problem.
So, instead of having it on that first Tuesday, we would just have it on the first Wednesday of October.
I don't have an issue.
Neither do I.
Staff, any, any issues? So, we'll go ahead and you'll send out notifications that we'll be moving the meeting to that Wednesday instead of that Tuesday. Okay, anything else, commissioners? Any concerns you want to bring up? All right, I look for a motion to adjourn.
Summon.
Second.
We're adjourned.